Councilmember Ray, as soon as you've got the scouts ready, let us know and we'll start.
I'll do it. I call the meeting to order, our June 5, 2014 Gilbert Town Council Meeting, welcome. Thank you for coming tonight. As stated on the agenda, we will begin with an invocation and pledge of allegiance. We'll start with the pledge. Councilmember Ray will introduce the scouts in just a moment. After the pledge, the invocation will be offered by Pastor Tim Thompson of the Fountain of Life Christian Fellowship. The agenda states, "The invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief, or non-belief, as well as council members. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk and interested persons should contact the clerk for further information." Councilmember Ray.
Mayor Lewis, we're going to ask Jacob Ray to offer, or at least in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance-
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, please.
So pass the microphone down if you want to just say your name and what your rank is, please.
I'm Tate Brown, Life Scout.
Jacob Ray, Star.
Spencer Sanders, Star.
Bryant Merrill, Second Class.
Jonah Call, Star.
Mayor Lewis, those are the scouts for tonight. Any words of wisdom you have for them?
I made it to three days of scout camp last week and it was fantastic. We've got some of the finest scouts in the world right in Gilbert, so thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Pastor Tim, please.
Thank you, Mayor Lewis, for having me here tonight to give the invocation. I'd like to start off by reading a passage of scripture from Romans, Chapter 12, and the verse 6. It says, "We all have different gifts according to the grace that has been given to us. If your gift is prophesying, then prophesy in accordance with your faith; if it is serving, then serve; if it is teaching, then teach; if it is to encourage, then give encouragement; if it is giving, then give generously; if it is to lead, then do it diligently; if it is to show mercy, then do it cheerfully." God, tonight I want to pray for our council members, our mayor, the leaders of our town. God, I pray that as they lead, I pray that they would do so with diligence. God, as we come into these summer months, which tends to suck the life right out of us, and God, here at this late hour of the day, they come and they are expected to be sharp and they are expected to understand the things that are being said and render their verdict in each situation. And God, I pray that you would give them an extra grace to be able to govern our people, to govern the laws of the citizens of Gilbert. And Lord, I pray that you would give them an extra strength. If they have children at home, these are the best of times and the worst of times. So God, I pray for that grace to be abundant upon their lives. God, I pray for the situations and the agendas that are on the table for tonight. I pray that you would grant them wisdom to know how to rule. God, I pray that they would overcome evil by good and not be overcome by evil. So Lord, I pray that where they're needing an extra oomph, Lord, an extra strength within their spirit, I pray that you would release that to them now. God, even where weariness would try to come down upon them and would try to swallow up their strength, I pray, God, that you would invigorate them even now, Lord, that they would be refreshed tonight. God, that the items on the agenda would go smoothly, that you would bring attention to the things that need to have attention, Lord, that we would be able to lead peaceful and tranquil lives. We pray this tonight, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Our town clerk, Kathy Templeton, will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
For Ms. President.
Thank you. We will begin with our presentations and proclamations. Agenda item number one, pillar of the month. Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, this month's highlighted pillar is citizenship. As council members and town staff, we are committed to helping the community be better, a better place to live and work by sharing resources to serve others, following all laws and regulations, and protecting the environment.
Mayor, it's my privilege to introduce Emma Hinton. As we do on a monthly basis, Mayor, we have an opportunity to honor our student citizens of the month. And Emma was our, one of our student citizens of the month just last month, and she's here on behalf of Gilbert Elementary School, so if we can give her a nice round of applause.
I would like to invite Luellet Johnson to the front. Let's hear a big round of applause. Well, Luellet, why don't you share a little bit about your, your role here in the town and maybe some favorite thing that you may remember that you'd like to share with us?
It's been a real, like, interesting time to work for the town of Gilbert. I came from Wisconsin, from an Ideal Door Company, to the prosecutor's office. It was quite a difference and it was a real change, but it was very, it's been very interesting and it's been a lot of fun and I've learned a lot. It's just been a lot of fun and I've enjoyed working with people and just getting to know a lot of different people and carrying, hopefully, what they've taught me here. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. So, Luellet, Luellet has served the town of Gilbert for 14 years and she's letting us know that she's going to go fishing. But we want to thank her for her years of service, so we have the certificate of appreciation that we like to give you on behalf of the mayor and the town council and all the family that you have here. We want to extend a wonderful thank you.
I'd like to invite Mara Benson up and Sherri Pierce, if you want to come up as well. From time to time, we love to recognize the great things that community members are doing for Gilbert and our community and today, right up here, Sherri, today's a great opportunity that the mayor has invited us to offer some congratulations to you, Mara, for some neat things that you've been doing. We really appreciate all that you do in the community and I know that you're affiliated with ice skating sports and things like that in town and we really appreciate the impact that you have had here in Gilbert. And so, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and read the congratulations so everyone knows why you're up here and then we'll let Sherri just spend a minute to introduce yourself. I know you're with Congressman Salmon's office and it's neat to have you here as well and you can read what you have as well. So, this is from the mayor. "As mayor of the town of Gilbert, it is my pleasure to extend congratulations to Mara Benson of West USA Realty for being named by the Southeast Valley Regional Association of Realtors as one of the top young professional networks, 2014, 40 Under 40 Realtor Award recipients. Mara was chosen for her demonstrated excellence in sales, strong leadership ability, and unsurpassed community involvement. Mara's dedication to the real estate industry is exceptional and her knowledge of the market has made her one of the top realtors in our area. And it's an honor to congratulate Mara for, upon her success in being named one of the best in the real estate industry. Her inspiring talent underscores the importance of strong leadership and community passion. She has set an example of excellence for others to emulate." And so, on behalf of Gilbert, the Gilbert Town Council and the citizens of our community, I wish, the mayor wishes, and we do as well, her continued great success in the years ahead. So, congratulations. And so now, oh, yeah, we can clap now, there'll be a lot of clapping.
Mara is also a good friend and I already know how wonderful and all the great things that she does, so on behalf of Congressman Matt Salmon, which our office is right up the street here, I want to present you with a letter of congratulations because this really is a prestigious and exciting award that you're getting and we're very proud of you, not just Congressman Salmon, but the entire staff, because you're representing us when you do this as well. And he wishes he could be here tonight, but he wanted to make sure and convey to you how proud he is of you and he knows that you not only have done great things, but have many more that you'll be doing and he appreciates that and so, congratulations.
We shift to Agenda 55. I know that, that's a big leap. As I return to the dais, Kurt will talk about something very special that's happening in the month of June.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the, excuse me, Gilbert Feeding Families Committee, I would like to let you all know and those of you watching at home, that yesterday we officially kicked off our annual food drive here at the town and- Had a few pictures to show you. Here's our flyer and be sure to grab one on your way out. The food drive itself will be running all month long during the month of June and our goal this year is 72,600 meals and that corresponds to the 72.6 square miles that make up the town of Gilbert. If we can do this, and I think we will, we'll, we'll really beat our record from last year, which our goal was 50,000 meals and we hit that. And as you can see here, there's a listing of some, some suggested items and there are a bunch of drop-off locations throughout the town. Here at the town hall, fire stations, recreation centers, libraries, we even have some at the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce and the Small Business Alliance, as well as some other local businesses, so we really appreciate your help with this so we can achieve our goal. And if, for some reason, you cannot donate food, but you would still like to contribute, money is great too. And this website here, gilbertaz.gov backslash feedingfamilies, you're able to donate money and just wanted to let you know that $1 equals five meals. It's the equivalent of five meals. So, anything you can do to help would be great. Also on this website, you can also see a video recap of yesterday's official kickoff, which was a bagging competition held at the Albertsons down the road. We were, the competition itself was between four levels of government. We had a representative from the federal government, state government, county government, and of course, your very own Mayor Lewis, representing your, your favorite local government. And just a side note, if you see any of these guys trying to bag your groceries, it's probably not a good idea. I don't advise that. And the defending champion, county supervisor Denny Barney, won again, so he's a back-to-back champion. And we had a lot of fun yesterday for a great cause and we wanted to make sure that we thanked Albertsons again. It's the one right here at Lindsay and Warner, so thank you, Albertsons. And we especially wanted to thank you for the $5,000 check that they gave us at the conclusion of the competition yesterday. And, and if you do the math, that's 25,000 meals, so thank you. And for everybody that would like to contribute, please grab a flyer on your way out and I would like to thank you all in advance for your support.
So what you're saying, Kurt, is just that one event, we're a third of the way there?
We are a third of the way there, but we could really use your help. One other, sorry, Mayor, there was one more event I wanted to tell you about. If you wanted to tune your, your radio to 104, or excuse me, 107.9 Camel Country, Monday, 11:30 to 12:30, they're doing a fundraising event for us where the, the two morning DJs, Steve and Nina, they will be tied to the flagpole at the American Legion down Gilbert Road and they cannot be released until they raise $1,079.
So they have 1,079 cans of food or equivalent dollars?
Correct, Mayor. So again, I thank you all for your support.
Thank you. Month of June, Gilbert Feeding Families. Sticking with the current events from the mayor, on more of a, I guess I'll call it somber sacred note, in our last council meeting, Chief Doran led us in a moment of silence and I'd like to do that again tonight. And tie it into a couple of things and one, in council chambers, you're able to see this picture of Lynn Hartline. She's a volunteer and just a few weeks ago, as a Gilbert resident, she was raising funds for a multiple sclerosis fund and died in a tragic accident on her while cycling. And of course, that's a reminder to be careful while we're cycling and as drivers too, but in the spirit of so many wonderful volunteers in Gilbert. And then I tie it also into, since we were last together, there was a wonderful event that took place on Memorial Day and we thank our Gilbert Historical Museum, our American Legion Post 39 for their efforts in organizing our Memorial Day celebration. You recall that we have a Gilbert resident that received at the end of the State of the Union, a three-minute standing ovation from President Obama, Sergeant First Class Corey Rumsberg, who his life changed in October of 2009 with a roadside bomb that nearly took his life. And his life changed again with that State of the Union because he has won it all over the United States. And over Memorial Weekend, Corey just happened to come back a day early so he could be at our Gilbert Memorial Day. He had been in Indianapolis to drop the ceremonial flag for the Indy 500. Corey is also featured on a magazine, My Life, and I understand that he was also in People Magazine this week and, and I just mention that because Corey, along with so many heroes, is appreciated. And tomorrow is the 70th anniversary of D-Day, June 6, 1944, when 156,000 Allied troops crossed the English Channel to the coast of Normandy. 10,000 on, in a 24-hour period, Allied soldiers lost alive, 6,600 Americans. And so, if you would join me in just a moment of silence, as we think of people like Lynn, wonderful volunteers, we think of those who have served us, who are currently serving, and even tonight as our budget night, our public safety officials, many to thank. And at this time, I'll, now start that moment of silence. Thank you. We continue with communication from citizens. As the agenda says, "Members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The council response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda." And Vice Mayor Cook, I understand that Brett is first and Brett was also at our bag-off competition and I'll let you lead the way.
Well, we would like to invite and welcome Brett Honig to the podium.
And for those who will be speaking at this part, you're invited to come to the podium, state your name and for the record, if you're a Gilbert resident, and you'll be given two minutes tonight to speak.
Mayor, my name is Brett Honig, I can't, I don't, I don't have a loudspeaker.
Did you want to use the handheld mic, Brett? Kurt?
Mayor, council, I wrote a letter to town manager. I am, wrote town manager a letter, I'm taking three months from the town, September 1st, until town manager give me a call. Mayor Lewis and everybody, I've been trying to do the best I can in this town and nobody's listening to me or nothing. I wrote the letter to town manager, I mean, he gets back, until he gets back on June 10th, I will wait for his phone call. I'm not mad, I just need to talk to town manager about what's going on.
Thank you, Brett, and we, you're one of our great volunteers, so we appreciate you.
Sorry, I called you sorry, President Lewis, 7:30. Cindy told me to call you 7:30 in the morning and, because you leave the house early, 7:30, 7:30, and that's what Cindy told me. And maybe you got the wrong information. We got, really, the invitation was wrong in the morning. Cindy told me, call you 7:30 in the morning, because you leave the house early, 7:30, because you do your merit stuff. That's why Cindy let me call. I'm sorry if you got the wrong information. Sorry we got in the medication this morning. Maybe Cindy didn't tell you. I'm sorry what happened this morning. You got me crying and everything else. I'm sorry, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Brett. Vice Mayor Cook, next.
Mayor, we'd like to welcome Mike and Mary Weatherill to the podium.
Can you hear me okay? All right. So, I'm Mike Weatherill, Gilbert resident.
Mary Weatherill.
So, just would like to go ahead and talk to something that happened recently and a decision that was made. I'm hoping we can appeal to you and very specifically, we're talking about the risk management, water department, and the director of public works. Earlier today, oops, I'm sorry. Earlier today, we came home to discover that we're going to have some trees removed from public property. It's along a water easement, there's eight of them, very specific, not water, is it water treatment?
Yeah, no, it's a water reservoir.
Reservoir. There are a series of homes that go in a, in a L shape and we're specifically have eight trees planted on the public property. These are all going to be torn down. Now, the ones that are go along the three houses on the left, if you will, they're all having pool problems. The roots of the trees are getting underneath the fence and so they've wanted to have them removed. We support that. But where we are at, there is no danger to the house. The trees are eight beautiful 10-year-old trees that spent the time to grow and it was actually put there when we made the agreement to, to have the easement or the-
Buy the easement, we bought the land.
Okay, thank you. So we bought the land. So with that in place and we made the agreements, now we're finding out today that we're going to have the trees torn down. All we're really asking is for you to consider saving the trees, removing the ones that are the problems, saving the city money and providing the trees to continue on where they're at.
As a screen, as promised.
Go ahead.
As a screen, as promised. They were placed there as a screen to, we have a two-story home and they were placed there to allow a screen to grow so that we don't have to look at the work that's being done at the city property, adjacent to our property. And they're beautiful, they're 10-year-old trees and they don't present a problem to our property, so we're just asking that they don't be removed. And they're scheduled to be removed next week, unbeknownst to us. We just found out this afternoon, just by chance.
Thank you. To our deputy manager, do we have all the information we need for follow-up?
Mayor, if you can just, one of you can come over and give me your contact information and I'll make sure we follow up with them.
Thank you for coming.
Mayor, we'd like to welcome to the podium Barbara Duncan.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis, town council members. Thank you for having me. My name is Dr. Barbara Duncan. I'm the secondary school principal at Edgewood Price Schools and I'm speaking on behalf of Edgewood Price Schools, 580 West Melody Avenue, Gilbert, Arizona. Edgewood Price first located its school at the crossroads of Melody and Monterey in 1996, in a light industrial park with the promise of current owners, Mark Stamp and Willard Chilkot, that other possible uses in the area were to be tennis courts immediately behind the homes that are just east and across Melody, a driving range or a park-and-ride request, where the current industrial condominiums now sit. The access roads into Gilbert Corporate Center are too narrow for large vehicles, which much less putting children and hundreds of cars on those same streets. We have continued to express our concerns that someone is going to get hurt and that the town's response was a promise to have as terms of approval for the next project to widen Monterey and for the time being, just painted over the bike lanes. I have a picture of the street here that you can see behind me. The corner of Stonehedge and Baseline is two-lane wide and town painted a third lane to allow turns into Stonehedge and two lanes out northbound traffic on Melody, Stonehedge to Baseline. This has created a very difficult and tight turn for small cars and trucks cannot make such a turn. The current owners of the new project at Monterey and Baseline has suggested that he bring his semi-trucks in through this way. This cannot occur. Likewise, semis on Monterey will cause issues both in traffic flow, but more importantly, to safety. We have spoken to many people at the town about this issue. There can be no semis on Monterey with the thousands of trips currently on that road getting elementary children to school. We have asked a new owner to bring his delivery semis into his facility from the east end of his property and we still hope he will, but he has affirmed with the town that he could still bring his semis through Monterey. Who would ever say such a thing? Monterey was not widened on the multiple times we offered to do it on our land at our cost before putting in all the improvements, so widening Monterey is not an option. A turn signal at Monterey and Baseline is not an option per city of Mesa since there are already lights on Stonehedge, Stapley, and Harris. We already doubled the left lane in Baseline at Monterey at our expense as terms of our school building. It seems that the only answer remains with the town in correcting problems that were created by a lack of foresight and planning in the Gilbert Corporate Center. We are asking the town to immediately post signs to disallow semis on Monterey and Stonehedge, Melody, encourage all semi-access to the east end of the corporate center, or three, complete newly from the residential neighborhood just south of, of the center, to the corporate center as designed and provide access from the corporate center to Harris if possible. Thank you so much.
Dr. Duncan, thank you. Now, would you like, I know we have the information, there's some follow-up occurring, would you like to have that document given to the deputy manager?
Yes, I would, thank you.
Please, thank you. Please, thank you. Vice Mayor Cook, I understand that's the list of those that wanted to speak.
We are done.
Okay, thank you. We move to the consent calendar, as listed on the agenda. Items listed on the consent calendar may be approved by a single motion unless removed at the request of council for further discussion or action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. Vice Mayor Cook, what requests do we have for the consent calendar?
Mayor, I would like to move that we approve Agenda Item 7 through 9, 14, 16 through 17A, 18A through 23, 25, 26, 29 through 35, 37, and I'd like to have Councilmember Taylor with Agenda Item number 36.
Mayor, I would move to reinstate Jason C. Van Kara as a member of the Human Relations Commission.
Thank you. With that motion and second, please vote. Those items are approved with a seven of a vote. Thank you. Now, Vice...
I don't think there was a second.
Second.
I moved.
Well, with that, second, and the vote that we were a little premature, do we need to revote? Let's revote. Okay, now that we're all, we've got to get in practice here. Thank you. Vice Mayor Cook, I started to follow, but then I fell behind slightly on those items we need to discuss, and...
I was trying to go as slow as possible, but I'll keep us in track here, or aligned here. Agenda Item Number 10, Councilmember Peterson.
And just to get, for the council, the full scope, that would be 10, 11, 12, 13?
15.
Okay, 15.
24, 27, and 28.
Thank you, that's very helpful. So Agenda Item 10...
18 was pulled, right?
No, no.
You wish to speak on 10?
Yes, Mayor. Not really. I just wanted to pull this, vote on this separately. Everyone's aware of my funding concerns, so I won't rehash that. I just wanted to...
But we'll pull 18, okay. So 10, who wishes to speak on 10?
Well, before we go, I know some of these were...
18 is on the agenda.
Right, those were removed from the agenda. That's right.
Yeah, the three that were removed from the agenda are all under the public hearing.
And 18. Agenda Item 18 was removed.
Mayor, our notes are that we're going to talk about 10, 11, 12, 13, 15, 24, 27, and 28.
And 28, that's correct.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move that we approve item number 10.
Second.
Okay, with that motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a five to vote, thank you. Agenda Item 11?
11's the same thing. Good programs, just a concern about the funding.
Move to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a five to vote, thank you. Number 12?
Mayor, I just had one quick question on this one. As far as ongoing and one-time costs, this is all to the town, there aren't any, right? I just want to make sure I understand that, going forward with this program. I never got a call back on this, sorry.
Please.
Honorable Mayor, council, thank you. The question is...
If we choose to participate in this, or approve this, is there going to be any ongoing or one-time costs, or ongoing costs to the town?
By the way, my name is Vicki Owen. I'm a crime prevention specialist with the Gilbert Police Department. There will be no ongoing cost to the town. This is not a matching fund, this is completely a check that comes to the Gilbert, town of Gilbert, that's actually funding the ACPA to do the Bolo Cop program.
All right. I don't see any costs. I'm supportive, Mayor, I just wanted to be clear on that.
Thank you. Hold, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve item 12.
Second. Okay, with that motion and second, please vote. Thank you, and Vicki, thank you. Agenda Item 13?
Mayor, I don't know if anyone else needs a presentation, I was the one that asked it to be pulled. Simple concept of I don't support tax dollars going to charity, I know it's different tax dollars, but that's the only reason I pulled it. Otherwise, I understand if others want to support it.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Move to approve, thank you. A second?
Second. But Mayor, I just wanted to make the statement, this isn't tax dollars, this is revenues from the Indian Gaming community.
It's a tax on those revenues, though. That's where they come from.
Okay, thank you. With that motion and second, please vote. It's approved with a five to vote, thank you. Agenda Item 15?
Mayor, I want to thank staff for their excellent presentation. They actually sent me a presentation of efficiencies gained, put it in terms of hours, staff hours saved, also listed new things that we were going to be able to do for our applicants, as far as services, and it was great. So I'm going to surprise some people, I'm supportive of it, because I have a plan to take those, because I see two whole bodies that are going to be saved, out of, that's what they said, eight hours a day for the building inspections, and then 10 hours a day for the code compliance inspections are going to be saved. So to me, if we take those two bodies out of the budget, it's a win. This is great. We're saving money, and we're improving our service all at the same time, through technology, that's the way it's supposed to be done. So I'm going to support it at that level, because later with the budget, I'm going to move to remove those dollars. But I just wanted to explain that, because that's going to come later in the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Mayor, move to approve item 15.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. It's approved with a seven of a vote, thank you. As I was reminded, 18 had been removed, and so the next one I have to discuss is 24. Okay? Did we wish to have discussion or comments? Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. Personnel rules, there's so much to talk about. Okay, I don't know where to start. There's a number of items, plenty of them are good, there's some I have concerns with. The main one I wanted to handle and talk about was the 410s issue. The bottom line is, after some calculations, the, I don't know if everyone's familiar with the story, the bottom line is before 410s, everyone accrued 16 holiday hours annually. That's basically two days off if you're on the 5/8 schedule, which is what everyone was. After the 410s, it was identified that people that went to 410s, well, if you take 10 hours and multiply by those 11 days, holidays, and plus the floating holidays, you end up with 110 hours. People on the eights, they had 11 holidays, that was 88 hours. So people on 410s got 22 hours more than people on 5/8s. Okay, that's the history. So what do we do? We throw the people on 5/8s another floating holiday, and so we end up with a lot more paid holidays than we had before. So the net of all of that resulted in, this is an estimate, because it's based on some averages, I threw staff some pretty tough requests, and it's 77, I'm sorry, $776,000 annually in hours, that's the value of the hours lost because of those paid holidays. Now, someone might say, well, what if they don't use those hours? Well, for anyone that's not exempt, they actually get premium pay. So if they're not using the hours, they actually get paid one and a half times their normal rate when they work on those days. So one way or the other, there's value lost by adding extra paid holiday hours. My proposal is just very simple, and it's actually in the personnel rules. The idea that we could revert back to the previous holidays' hours if we go back to not being on 410s, I say we just go to that concept and stay on 410s, it's fine. I know a lot of people like the 410s, we don't have to get rid of that, but we can go back to this concept of everyone accrues 16 hours. And what we would do for people who are on the 410s is they would simply lose their floating holidays, they would still get 90 paid holiday hours versus the people on 5/8s would still only have 88. So they'd actually get a few, couple more hours, a little less flexibility, sure, but then we're kind of back in line with where we were, and we save the taxpayers over $700,000 in value. It's 8.5 FTEs organization-wide is the value of that. And so that's my proposal, I have a language for emotion for that, that's the biggest one. And then there's a number of other items. This is such a big agenda, I apologize, but maybe we take them one at a time? I don't know what to do with this, Mayor, I've got so many. Maybe we just start with that and see what people think?
How many do you have?
Okay, we've got the layoff notice, no, we can, don't worry about that. We've got the appeals change, representation change, the floating holiday, I just talked about, the prosecutor appointment change, reinstatement change, and part-time premium pay change. Those are, so I don't know if you kept count, that was something like five or six.
Okay. Why don't you take as fast as you can, maybe 15 to 30 seconds for each one, and go for it?
All right. So there's a change here to remove the council from the process of hiring the prosecutor. Right now, it's similar to what happened with the fire chief, which is that we don't choose who to hire, but we confirm them. We basically, you know, we have some role to play, sort of like the Senate confirms appointees, whatnot. I think that's good. I think we added value to the fire chief process as a council, and I don't see any reason to change that. So I think we keep that with the prosecutor, having some review of the council, it's minimal, but at least we have a little input. The other item was the reinstatement clause. So the way it worked previously was if a town employee...
And Councilmember Peterson, I'm sorry, just, so first, what I was hearing is that you're okay with the prosecutor change?
No, I'm saying let's keep it the way it was.
Keep it the way it was.
Yeah. It's proposed to be changed to basically cut council out of the loop on that, there may be a nicer way of saying it, but we're not in the process anymore. And I don't think, I don't see what we gain by that. So I would like to leave that the way it was. I'm coming from a perspective of, here are things that are being recommended to change that I would not like to change. So that's the way I'm doing it. Everything else is fine, and there's a lot of items. So this is, this is a drop in the bucket of the number of items that were on there. So reinstatement. The way it worked was, previously, if a town employee left employment of the town and came back at some future date, we as a town, in our policy, had an option to do one of two things. We could either appoint them, reinstate them, sorry, back to the same job at the same level, or we could reinstate them to a lower level. We had options. I asked about this, and the bottom line is, we want to eliminate the option to reinstate them to a lower level. I'm not sure how that helps us. One of the examples that I actually got from staff, I won't name names in case they don't want to be drawn into this, for obvious reasons, is that if somebody leaves the town and they're gone for 10 years, the skills required to do the job they left may have changed quite a bit, they may do some other job completely anyway, they come back, they may not really fit into that job still. I think it would be good as an employer, representing the taxpayer as the employer, to have the option of, either way, now if their skills are still appropriate, we would appoint them to the same job. If they're not, we'd have the option of reinstating them to a lower level. I don't see what we gain by eliminating the option, is the bottom line, and so I don't see why we would remove that.
Thank you.
The next one is part-time premium pay. The way it works now is full-time, sorry.
Would you mind stating the reference, like what number these are?
Yes, the first one was 1.3.6C, that's for the prosecutor. And this, the second one about reinstatement was 3.2.5, 3.2.5. Okay? The next one about part-time premium pay is...
Councilmember Peterson, excuse the interruption, I wasn't sure if they're really quick, and now I can tell these are well-thought-out items. Let me ask for some help here. Because for council members, this is where, when we're able to see ideas, and these may be ideas that we all want to follow, often it's nice to have time to look at something, so we can ask questions and determine what the impact would be, because it might look great and we go for it, but there could be repercussions. The items that are listed, and we could get them in the record, is it possible to move forward with the rest of the items, and then put these separate so we can have time to have staff summarize them, and we could vote on them on the 26th? Is that an option?
Mayor, so I understand your question. If you want to approve all the changes but the ones that are being brought into question, you have that right and opportunity, and then we could bring them back in the future, should you, you can change the personnel rules at any point that council wants to consider a change. So what I hear you asking is, if you were to act on all of the changes, less those that have been brought into question by Councilmember Peterson for more review and follow-up at a future meeting, we definitely could do that.
And in fairness to Councilmember Peterson, when you've taken some good time, and these are sounding like they make sense, it's, I can tell as you had five or six, that at some point, I'm going to forget what you said on the first one, so how do you feel about that option?
Well, that's encouraging. I know it sounds like it makes sense in my head, but thank you for that. No, I'm totally fine to approve everything except for a few. The only one I would like to try and address tonight, if we could, is just the floating holiday issue.
So that first one?
The 410s. The rest of them, that's fine, let's put them off.
And for the record, then, and I'm looking to the three of you, should we have Councilmember Peterson be very specific of the items that we'll discuss, so when there's a motion, not counting the holiday, that it would be moved to approve pending, or you could help us on the language, but pending discussion on these items?
Mayor, the way I would suggest is that approve the staff recommendation, less changes to Article 3.6, 4.2. But one question for council to consider, there is a change and a modification to the appeal process, which if is not acted upon tonight, will cause us a little bit of disparity between the MOUs that are sunsetting on June 30th to, so there potentially will be a gap that we will have to address that may cause some administrative issues. Carrie, I don't know.
And we could probably discuss that tonight, then, with that. Okay. So Councilmember Peterson, outside of the appeal and the holiday discussion, for the record, go ahead and list the items that we'll ask town leadership to follow up on.
Mayor, I move to approve all the recommended amendments to the personnel rules, as presented by staff, except for the following items. Sections 1.3.6C, Section 3.2.5, about reinsta, should I give what it's about? Do you care? Probably not.
This is way more than five.
And, well, and then 4.9.3.2, and 4.10.4. Sorry, that is more than five. Three of them are all about the same issue, and it's all representation.
Mayor, I would ask just Carrie to confirm that we're talking about the same items, just...
Mayor, members of the council, it might be, for clarity, it might be better if Victor mentioned the subject, the subject of each of those things. So the first one, 1.3.6C, regards, is with regards to the prosecutor. But at that point, of course, we stopped.
Thank you.
I can do that.
Please.
Mayor, I move to approve all items as recommended, amendments to all items in the personnel rules as recommended by staff, minus the following items, which will be discussed at a future date. Section 1.3.6C about the prosecutor, Section 3.2.5 about reinstatement, Section 6.3.2.4 about... 6.3.2.4 about part-time premium pay. I'll skip that one. And then sections, three sections about representation, 4.3.1.3, 4.9.3.2, and 4.10.4.
Mayor, Councilman Peterson, I believe you left out your number four. That was 3.2.
It doesn't matter. That one's fine. I'm okay with it.
Okay.
It's not a big deal.
So, that was the 3.2.4.1A?
Trying to keep it to five topics.
Okay, all right. So, that one's not part of the, that, that one's included in the motion to approve. Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion to clarify?
And...
Second?
Mayor and, and members of the council.
Taylor?
Not only desire, does he wish to exclude those, but he also wishes to exclude the holiday pay issue.
That would be a separate action. We'd have to take affirmative action. It's not recommended in the personnel rules to change.
Okay. Right.
Okay, so we could go ahead and, and take the motion in the second and vote?
Yes.
Okay.
I would just ask Mayor, if, if Carrie, if you anticipate any administrative issues other than the ones you've already talked about by leaving those alone for this evening?
Mayor, members of the council, no, I'm okay with withholding on those.
Thank you. So, with that motion and Councilmember...
I'd like to amend the motion. I don't even know if this is legal, so. I'd like to amend the motion to approve the personnel rules as presented to us. I feel really comfortable with them. I've had long conversations with Carrie about it. I don't really have a desire, Mayor, to step back and remove things from what we've approved. If we can, if we can amend the personnel rules at any time, um, I think we're taking a backwards approach to this. So, my preference would be to vote on them as they're presented, and that is my amended motion, if it's acceptable, the legal.
Second?
Second.
Mayor, members of the council, it is an appropriate motion.
Okay. With that amendment to the motion that received a second, let's, okay, and that's what we're voting on right there, okay? Let's please vote. And that's approved with a five to vote. So, back to, uh, we still vote on what Councilmember Peterson proposed?
The amended motion is now to approve the personnel rules as recommended by staff.
Okay. Do, do we need to formally though with the...
Can I ask a point of, a question? Councilmember Daniels, were you open to the discussion on the floating holiday issue?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Mayor, could we just have a clarification on what this vote is? Because I heard one thing, but I'm, I'm wondering if we're confused a little bit up here.
The, the, the original motion was to approve the personnel rules with certain amendments. The amendment was to delete all of the amendments. So, this motion will be to approve the personnel rules as presented in your packets in front of you.
Any additional discussion that we need to have? Just a second, any, okay, Councilmember Peterson?
I just have a question on one of the items. Councilmember Daniels, can you help me understand how it helps us to eliminate an option to reinstate an, an employee at a lower level?
I, it, it's not a 10-year frame. It, within the personnel rules, it listed as being within one year. And I can think of several examples that we've had where there's a very specialized type of position, be it an expert in water or maybe some other. Um, I, I would like the option to reinstate them in their current position. Perhaps they've left for personal reasons, perhaps they've, I think that within a year, that's a reasonable timeframe. I would like to see that as an option, and so they can re, we, we now have that option with, within a year, under the way it's pr- presented.
Just to clarify, that option's already there, is what I'm telling you. So, the option to reinstate them at their current level's already there. So, if you want more options, you wouldn't amend to, to remove the option. So, you can already reinstate them at their current level, or you could reinstate them at a lower level. So, if you want more options, it doesn't really make sense to, to go against keeping the way, way it is.
I'm comfortable with the way the personnel rules have been presented and explained. That wasn't one that I specifically delved into, because I felt like that was the way I read it, a very reasonable accommodation. I'm comfortable with it where it is. If you want to perhaps revisit it after, um, like, as we've already stated, you have the ability to amend personnel rules at any time, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, one thing I, I appreciate, you know, Victor taking some time to go through this. When I read through it, you know, I've got 10 years in the HR, um, space here, and, you know, this particular item here, the standard HR policy is 30 days for this. We have one year. So, I think it's reasonable for us to come up with current practices. There's a lot of real antiquated things in here, maybe 15 years old, um, that are not standard. There's a lot of, uh, things in here that are not valued to the taxpayer. Um, he has a series of things on representation. If we approve this as amended, what we're approving is a lot of taxpayer money going for non-town purposes, um, which I don't support. Um, taxpayer money should be spent for town purposes. Um, and so, I think it's, it's reasonable, a reasonable request, and, um, I think it's consistent with, I mean, this is in front of us tonight. That's the whole point of a council meeting, is to review these, and it's a big package, so to pull it out, um, and approve most of it, and discussing a couple of things, that's very reasonable. I think that's well within our thing, and I, I don't think it serves the public well to just, you know, just rubber stamp something. When, when is our opportunity to go through and bring things up, um, you know, to current, a current practice where there is some waste in here that we can, um, we can return to the taxpayer?
Mayor, I'm not, uh, interested at all in rubber stamping any agenda items. Uh, I spend a tremendous amount of time, just like the rest of the council members, to review and understand exactly what I'm looking at, and, and so, I think rubber stamping is probably the wrong terminology to use, because I think we all spend a lot of time trying to understand what's, what's involved.
I think with that vote, let's move on, and as was stated, there are options to present thoughts and ideas in the future. And Councilmember Peterson, thank you for taking so much time to look at it. 27?
Mayor, we still need to vote on the amendment.
Mayor, we haven't voted on the...
Okay, that's what I was checking on, but, no.
Just, all we do is call for votes.
So, on the original amendment, we have a motion and second.
Amendment motion.
Okay. Please vote. Well, just to clarify...
This vote is for Councilwoman Daniels' proposal.
Yes.
So, if we vote yes on this, we go forward with the entire agenda item as presented.
The main motion is amended, which is to adopt the entire rules as presented by staff.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on 24? Vice Mayor Cook, 27?
27. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I had to poll 27 and 28. I have a conflict of interest. I'm a manager of VIP Custom Homes LLC that owns Greenfield Meadows, and of VIP Homes that owns Greenfield Farms, which are numbers 27 and 28. So, I won't be speaking or voting on those.
Thank you.
Mayor, move to approve 27 and 28.
Second.
Thank you. With that motion and second, please vote on 27 and 28. That's approved with a six to vote. Thank you. Vice Mayor Cook, I believe that we have completed the consent calendar.
We have.
Okay. On the public hearing, for clarification, 42 and 44 and 46 have been removed from the agenda. Excuse me, 42 has been modified. Thank you, Councilmember Ray. So, 44 and 46 have been removed, and 42 is still on the agenda, and as noted, there was a change. And Vice Mayor Cook, we did have requests on...
I forgot this one.
To the council, um, we missed a request from a citizen to speak on 30 that we have voted on. Vice Mayor Cook, let's just... That was Peter. Peter, are you still here? Okay, what we'll do is at least, uh, did he state a position?
He did not state position.
We will give that to the town clerk, um, for the record. Thank you. On the public hearing items, what number was... To the council, and Vice Mayor Cook, you may have this information already. To get a feel for what items you would like discussed, um, do you already have a tabulation, Vice Mayor Cook?
I do not have a tabulation. I know that there was some discussion.
All right, let me do this quickly. I'll just look to my right and left. Um, if someone wished to have discussion or speak on this item, raise your hand. 38, 39, 40, okay, 41, 41A, 42, and we did have a citizen get on 41, I'll make note of that. 43, 45, 47, 48, and then the 49 will have our special meeting. To the agenda, for the public to understand, we are about to have a public hearing open. In a public hearing, individuals wishing to speak may fill out a public hearing comment form and, and have an opportunity to speak. After the public hearing, the council may act on all items, not requiring additional staff, public, or council member comment with a, with a single vote. So, I'm going to note the 41, we wish to, a citizen wished to speak on it, and, and I'll say, well, let me open the public hearing, and you can confirm that I've got the right numbers, 38, 39, 41A, 43, 45, 47.
Not 42 as modified?
And...
That was polled, right?
I thought it was modified, so 42 as modified.
42 as modified, thank you. I'll include that, and, and I will open the public hearing on 42. And with the numbers I just said, there was no desire for council discussion, so I now close the public hearing on 38, 39, 41, 41A, 42, 43, 45, and 47, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Items 38, 39, 41A, 43, 45, and 47. And 42 as modified.
Thank you.
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. Councilmember Peterson, what was your vote? There you go, thank you. That's approved with a seven to vote. Thank you. I now open the public hearing on Agenda Item 40, and I don't know if we need to have any discussion or just to vote on 40? Okay?
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 40.
Second.
Okay, with that motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a fourth to vote. Thank you. I now open the public hearing on Agenda 41. We did have a citizen who wished to speak on 41, and I'll look to town leadership, would it be helpful to have just a, and Linda, there you are, please, if you could give us a quick overview of 41 to set the stage.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a project in the northern part of our community, basically at the southeast corner, just south of the southeast corner of Higley and Baseline Road. And I'll zoom in here for you. This project was annexed, general plan and zone approved for larger lot SF 35 in 2004. At that time, the general plan showed this as a residential, um, part of our community, about 3.5 dwelling units per acre. It was still in the county. It came into the town of Gilbert in 2009, and, um, as you can see my, by my notes there, we rezoned it in 2011. Uh, not rezoned it, but the general plan moved it to regional commercial in 2011, and recently, it was rezoned to regional commercial. The property, 13 acres, has existing infrastructure, and the larger lots have been proposed to be cut in half, and they barely meet, or they do meet, uh, the SF 10, uh, standards. However, the lots are about 19,000 square feet, and they're asking for very minor deviations that amount to about one foot, so they can meet, uh, the setbacks they need to not destroy the existing infrastructure. There are also just a few other, um, unique conditions of approval, such as allowing two-story homes when adjacent to regional commercial, so the lots on the north would be able to develop as two-story homes. The north, as shown here, are lots 1 through 10. The number 10 lot, and the one just south of it, number 11, has also been conditioned to only permit one-story homes, so that the neighbor existing on the east is buffered with one-story homes to this development. And that is a wrap-up, pretty much, of the deviations on this case.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Cook, we'll proceed with the request to speak.
We'd like to welcome James Smith to the front.
And James, as you heard, if you can state your name for the record, and if you're a Gilbert resident, and you'll be given two minutes to speak.
Thank you. My name is James Smith. I am a Gilbert resident. I'm in the property just immediately adjacent to this, uh, development. I wish to thank the staff, the town, Planning and Zoning Committee, and the applicant for working together. Everyone gave up something in making this come to fruition, but it was democracy in action, and I applaud the Planning and Zoning Committee, staff, and the developer for working with me and with the rest of the town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Any discussion before I close Agenda Item 41? Councilmember Ray?
Just briefly, Mayor, I, I live right down the street from this, and, uh, when it first had the sign out front that there was a zoning change, most of the neighborhood wanted acre lots in there, but, uh, they realized that it's not going to happen anytime soon, if ever, and so, in talking to lots of neighbors, it's, it was unanimous that everyone wanted this to change, even though it was making bigger lots smaller, uh, this was in their best interest, as they thought, and so I add the support to that as well.
Thank you. I close the public hearing on Agenda 41, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve Item 41 as presented in the agenda.
Second.
Okay, with that motion and second, please vote. Thank you, that's approved with a seven to vote. And Linda, thank you. I'm looking at Agenda Item 48. Okay. I open the public hearing on Agenda Item 48, and Councilmember Peterson, did you wish to have any staff presentation?
No, Mayor. Everyone's heard my objections. I just wanted to be able to vote on it separately. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, any discussion before I close the public hearing item? I close Agenda Item 48. We'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve Agenda Item Number 48.
With that motion, oh, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. With that motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a five to vote. Thank you. We recess our regular meeting, or, excuse me, is there a motion to recess our regular meeting and convene in a special meeting?
Some vote.
Attorney General Clerk, did you get that?
Second.
Okay, thank you. We now convene in a special meeting tonight on Agenda Item 49. We are to discuss a final budget. And, Don, I believe you've got a short overview, and then we'll open it up for discussion
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Dawn Buckland, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget here for the town of Gilbert. And yes, this evening, we do have a short presentation as we wrap up the, um, the budget process, um, for the upcoming fiscal year. We're looking tonight at the recommended budget for fiscal year beginning July 1st of 2014, as what we refer to as fiscal year 2015, ending in June 30th, 2015. I wanted to take a moment to highlight a few, um, items. You've seen this, um, this, this slide before. We began the year by talking to council... We began the year by talking to council as far back as August at what the focus area should be. And if you'll recall, we started with our mission, vision, and values, we looked at our strategic initiatives, and then just to refine that and make sure that we were focused on the highest priorities for the upcoming year, we keyed in on those focus areas as directed by council during the workshop in August. Those are there that you see before you. So one of the questions that has come up consistently over the course of the last few weeks has been the role of growth here in the town. And we've talked about growth in terms of the tremendous population growth that we've had here, but we've also been looking at growth in a number of other ways. We are a community that has experienced tremendous and explosive growth, especially over certain years, and particularly over the last three decades, when you look at our community compared to other communities around the nation and actually around the world. And so, one of the things that we recognize as staff, as we were looking at the budget this year, is that we really have yet to reach what we would consider an equilibrium. We're making sure that our services are appropriate for our community and our community's identity today, and that's something that council has been good to give clear direction to staff to ensure that we continue to do so. As we continue to grow, additional infrastructure needs are coming about, and we want to make sure that we manage those infrastructure needs to accommodate that new growth. Additionally, on the heels of a recession, there are deferred maintenance issues that we have continued to address over the last couple of years, and you'll see that there's a continued emphasis this year. Simultaneously, we're trying to proactively address those issues that today we can do through long-range infrastructure planning. And so, as our infrastructure begins to age, we are prepared to address that aging infrastructure. Because again, as we remind council and remind our public, the funding sources that we had to build that infrastructure in the first place cannot be used to maintain it, nor to rehabilitate or reconstruct those items. So we wanted to highlight a few areas in which you can really see some of that growth. First and foremost, I wanted to point out there that, right there in the top center of that slide, that in May, the census named Gilbert the twelfth fastest-growing community with any, with populations of over fifty thousand. Not only is it tremendous to show that they were twelfth in the nation with, of communities over fifty thousand, but really, the fact that we're now at two hundred and thirty thousand, and still as a percentage, we're experiencing that level of growth, serves to indicate the type of growth and the sure immensity of that growth as it impacts our community. We're continuing to grow. You'll see there the total housing units through two thousand and twelve. That is based on census data, and they have yet to release the two thousand and thirteen data. We'll be sure to update that as soon as they do. But just for a reference sake, just for the single-family homes, and this number here represents multifamily as well, but we had another nineteen hundred and twenty-seven permits that year. So you'll see that that type of growth will continue as we get that two thousand and thirteen data, and then again, as we get the two thousand and fourteen, based on the permit activity that we're seeing here today. As we continue to grow, additional infrastructure and services are going to be required for those new residents, and then also for the corresponding commercial as well. When you look at fire, police, streets, traffic, and housing, though, that growth and population translates to more than just housing units. We've got infrastructure, utilities, services to these homes, more streets to maintain, more traffic signals, more fire stations, and then proactive policing, and you can see the results of that proactive policing there, in terms of our crimes per thousand residents, from FY two thousand and five of twenty-seven point four, down to sixteen point five here in FY two thousand and thirteen. So now, the information that you see here before you tonight, you can also find in our CAFR, the most recent one for fiscal year ending June of two thousand and, or, excuse me, for the FY thirteen CAFR, will help you to tie any of these back, and there are certainly more data in there as well. When you look at the water usage, for example, you see here, we're looking just at the winter average, because we wanted to make sure we maintained an apples-to-apples comparison. So we're not taking into account any particularly hot months or years during the summertime, differences in landscaping and consumptive use. So when you look there at the seven point six one, thousand gallons, that's our average, if you apply that now to the water meter reads that you see over that historical period of time, the result between the number you see in FY two thousand and five and FY two thousand and fourteen, actually equates to another hundred and eighty-two million gallons of water a year. So what you see here is a summary of that impact. The change that we've experienced, you can see there how it ties together and how responsive the town has been over that time. When we look at the change in population, we look at the change in residential growth, but also the change in commercial growth. And that commercial growth reflects certain types of commercial activity that weren't present here in the town back in two thousand and five. We have a mall, we have, we have new hospitals, we have all kinds of other types of growth besides just the residential side, and that equates to additional services that the town is providing, and they also contribute towards the cost of those services. But what you can really see is the town has also been responsive. So as we've trended in those growth areas, so have we trended in our budgets and our FTE requests. And so, you can see there the percent changes as we went along. And during those years where the growth was at a minimum, we actually reduced our total number of FTE. Similarly, when you look at the cumulative growth there from FY two thousand and seven to fourteen, that does reflect one of our significant years where we did add additional FTE in two thousand and seven, and we wanted to make sure and highlight that to give you that accurate picture. But you look at how much we've grown in FTE of eight point five percent, and we compare that to the actual growth that we're seeing in other areas throughout the town, and you can see that the town and the town council has indeed made some very conservative decisions related to growth. Councilmember Peterson, we'd had some discussions related to the cost per thousand, and we've talked about different ways that we could assess that. What you see here is a reflection of those conversations, and those first three years, our actuals, we've used the actual data from the CAFR, so that our numbers would be consistent. But we do have to acknowledge is that for the current fiscal year, which is not yet over, and for the next fiscal year, we had to use the budget data. So you do see an increase between the actuals and the budget, which you would expect to see, because we do, we will be, we will be under our budget. But you can also see then, the relative level of increase over those years. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions at this point? To the council, you've been very busy studying the budget. There've been a lot of questions, and I know that because on many of the questions, I was on the tail end, and I got the response, oh, so-and-so just asked that same question. So thank you for all the studying. We have had our preliminary budget discussion, and so to council members, are there items that need to be discussed? Councilmember Peterson?
First of all, I just want to just point out a couple facts, and then make one statement, and I'm sure we'll be moving on with our evening. But the, the numbers that are there, as far as being under budget, that's really not a safe assumption anymore, because if we compare what we planned on to the actuals based on ongoings, they've actually lined up for those other two years, fiscal year twelve and thirteen, are almost, what we actually spent, actually in one of the years, was more than what we projected as far as an ongoing cost was. So it's not really a good assumption to say we're going to be under those dots, I don't believe, because we've got two years that contradict that data that are recent, and we have made changes to try and prevent, actually, this sort of padded budget problem we have for so many years, and I really appreciate that. Staff's done some great work on that. So I just wanted to point that out. And furthermore, the other thing I would point out is this is a very limited window. If we want to look at the full, a larger history of Gilbert and look at, you know, the kinds of performance we've had in years past, but still controlling for inflation, which is only fair to do, you'll see that there's some other trends that emerge, and this graph is also very flat. So we've taken the ranges, and you typically try and put your minimum towards the bottom of the graph, so you can really see the differences. So it makes it look like a lot less than, than it is in perspective of the larger years and in perspective of maximums and minimums. Anyway, with that all being said, I do want to commend Team Gilbert for its successes. Yes, I said Team Gilbert. There are many things that we could point to, but we not only have the safest city in the valley, we also have the lowest taxes as well. There was a time when our status as having the lowest taxes was threatened, and there was a lot of pressure on Councilmember Daniels and Mayor Lewis in that regard. And I'm grateful for all of us who stood together to protect our taxpayers, and it has done, it has served us very well. We've done well, and I know that our history proves that we can continue to improve, and that's really my focus. I got, it was interesting, this concept about this metric. I got a survey in the mail that says, it's asking, do you favor this or that or the other, adopting a spending cap that prohibits the local government budget from growing faster than the rate of population growth plus inflation. I was fascinated at that, because, I mean, I didn't, I didn't know that was a concept that others had been exploring. It seemed to make a lot of sense to me. This is not a new concept. There are people grasping on to it. I'm not saying I like that kind of legislation. I like more local control. I'm just saying, this is a good concept, and it does guarantee to our citizens that we can continue to raise the bar and improve our efficiency and do more with each dollar. And as we grow, with, if we do it right, with economies of scale, we should be able to do that. That's all I was going to say. We're about six point seven million dollars above where we, I would say we are, based on the best-fits graph of inflation. And so, I just, I think we need to get closer to that. Tonight, I was hoping we'd get a little closer with the four tens. That would have been three-quarters of a million dollar per year. That would be ongoing. I'm disappointed we missed out on that. The other one is, is good with the software. We just need to back it out of the budget now. So I would propose that we adopt a budget that is, well, I would like to see nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars less, and still encourage the four tens to come back, because that could help us achieve that without, shouldn't address, it shouldn't affect levels of service. That, those will become productive hours. It should, it should work in the long haul. Maybe in the short term, it might be challenging, but as far away from where we should be as we are, I think that's reasonable and something we should shoot for. So with that, those are my thoughts. Thanks for listening, and we'll move forward.
Thank you. Let me just, I'll go this direction, if there are any other comments any of you would like to make. Councilmember Ray?
I'll say to staff, thank you for your time. I've spent a lot more time than most of you probably wanted to spend talking about this, and I appreciate the answers, and I think I asked some, some good questions, and they had great responses, and they've put a lot of time and effort into this, and I appreciate all that the budget does and all the different departments do to help make this budget come together.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cook.
Well, I spent a lot of time with Dawn, and in fact, one of the things that, when I think about us running our business as a large corporation, one of the things that I'm familiar with is that you manage your business based upon growth. And one of the things that was really important for me in learning and studying the information that Dawn shared, was really us managing our growth. And what was nice about going through the metrics is that in all the areas of Gilbert that we've been doing, there's a lot of tremendous growth. But as it relates to how we're running our business, for at least the last three years, what I've thoroughly enjoyed is that we're below that, that rate based upon that growth. And in fact, if I see the numbers correctly, what we adopted last time, again, for the general fund, was a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars. We're going to come under potentially twenty million dollars below that number as relates to expenses. And that's an amazing amount of dollars, if you think about us, the town, being frugal with their dollars and all that, that we're not going to spend twenty million dollars. So I've been pretty thrilled, excited about how the staff, the leadership in the town is managing our tax dollars. I believe that the citizens and the businesses in Gilbert are getting their value out of the services that we provide at the lowest, at the lowest cost, and we provide the highest service. So I'm ready to move forward in approving the budget.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor, any comments you'd like to make?
Mayor, thank you. For, for a team that is, you know, this close, I think it's, it's a credit to the hard work Dawn's done and her team and all of us. You know, I'd like to see it a little lower, but the percentage that I'd like to see it a little lower is about one point two percentage of what it is, like I mentioned in the other session, and if that's all that we're off, you know, I think that says a lot about where we are, and if we're just, we don't challenge things like I know we do, you know, offline and here, I don't think that's healthy either, so I think it's a good, good opportunity. For me, I'll just restate maybe just a little more concisely. What I'm seeing as the trend is, as, you know, the question is how to manage growth. I think that was a good comment, right? Do you manage growth by continuing to invest in overtime, or do you continue to invest in things that will benefit your community? To me, that's where the balance is a little bit off here. You know, we were told by Development Services, we wouldn't need more headcount. We have two headcount here. We were told that the IT system that we just approved was going to make us more efficient, and yet, and yet, we have, you know, more overhead here that's becoming less efficient. To me, that's an inconsistency that I think the budget should true up, and I think that, you know, we owe that as, as the representatives of the community to reflect that. So I'm concerned that we do have more investment in overhead that's necessary. What I'd like to do with that money is put it into either savings or more investment into our infrastructure, more roads. We have the Parks Master Plan that's coming down the pipeline, that the Parks Board is doing some really good work there, and that's not going to be cheap. You know, we're going to need that money there. I'd rather save some money from the overhead line items to put into some of the parks and recreation items there and, and our infrastructure. So anyways, I've outlined some things in the past, both specific and strategic. It was sort of alluded to that I, that I gave no suggestions, and of course, I appreciate Kathy noting in the minutes that we've approved some of the specific things that I did mention, and asked that, or certainly extended the opportunity to talk a little bit more about that, and was a little disappointed that there was really not a lot of follow-up on that, because I think there's some really good opportunities to take taxpayer money out of overhead, out of bureaucracy, and into our citizens that directly benefit them. And that, that's, and again, like I said, we're one point two percent off from where I'd like to be. So it's not as if there's this big massive chasm here, and this illusion that there's this big huge budget battle is, is really not founded there. But for me, I think we would benefit by bringing that down. I'd still like to see us cut a little bit more, you know, six point seven is still what I'd like to see this less as. There's some investments in our community that I'd like to make. Gilbert Junior High Pool, maybe I'm the only guy in the town here, but I know that I'd like to find a way to keep that online. There's three pools in the north servicing, you know, probably seventy percent of our, and if that comes offline, and there's only two, it's putting strain on the district for their high school swim teams, and that, so I would like to see in some other areas, some additional investment. That's just one specific area. So Mayor, I won't go on. That's, that's the trend there, and again, I think we're really close, and I think it's a good thing.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels?
Thank you, Mayor. I especially appreciated the first couple slides of your presentation, Dawn, and just the visual representation of the fact that we continue to grow as a community, and yet, we continue to provide the same level of service or better. And to me, that says something about the efforts of both staff and the efforts of our citizens to make sure that there's value in, in each dollar that they're paying in taxes. I completely agree with you, Councilmember Taylor, about our park system. I anticipate those to be very healthy discussions moving forward, and that's actually one of the things I like about this budget, is I think we've built the capacity to do some of those things that we've been talking about in the Parks Master Plan in this budget, and that's, that's another reason that I, I'm actually excited. I think that as citizens, we have a lot to be proud of, and I take great pride in this community, as do all the citizens that I've, that I've spoken to. I just, before this council meeting, came from one of our local Parks and Rec swim meets, where probably three hundred youth between the ages of five and seventeen are out there swimming in a hundred and five-degree heat with smiles on their faces, in a really well-run and organized way. Without fail, every time I turn my faucet on at home, clean water comes out. Now, it's warm right now, warm clean water, but it's clean water. When I drive through Gilbert, despite the fact that we have lots of construction projects going on, you see that capacity, that growth continue. It seems like multiple times a week, Mayor, we have businesses that are having a ribbon cutting in the town of Gilbert, where they're opening their doors to our, their, our citizens, and... in the town of Gilbert, where they're opening their doors to our citizens, and our Development Services team, and others are working with them to make sure that they can open and provide those services and those goods to the town. It seems like every department that we've had the opportunity to, that does interface with the town continues to provide more. And we have come to expect it as citizens, but I also want to make sure that our staff and the rest of the community knows that we really do appreciate those efforts. So with all of that said, Mayor, I'm very actually proud of this budget, and I am excited for us to move forward with lots of incredible things on the horizon for 2014, 15. And I know that as soon as we adopt this budget, just a few weeks from now, we'll start on the following budget. And it's a never-ending process, but I think we are continuing to get better, and we are continuing to improve, and we're building capacity for the community, and I, again, am just thrilled about that.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper?
I, just to follow up on that point, I'm thinking back to the retreat last year, and that's kind of the beginning of this process. Every year, it starts with strategic direction from the council, and I, as I look at this budget, I feel like the staff listen to the guidance that we attempted to provide on behalf of the public and have provided a very good budget. You know, I think ratios are helpful, but I think it's a bit dangerous to govern by them. You know, if that was all it was that we had to do, we could easily just hire a computer, basically, to do our work for us, and the budget process would take about a millisecond or something. We need to put a lot of thought into things. We're a growing community. The changes that are in this budget here before us will put us in the position to be successful in the future. And technology that's invested in now will result in fewer people that need to be hired, but we may not know that, because as we're growing, you know, we have a staffing study we might be able to compare it against, but we already know where we need to go as, as far as we, we grow in this technology. All of the technology investments we're doing are to put us in a position to be more successful and more efficient as we go forward. And so I don't look necessarily at these positions as overhead. I look at them as service-delivery positions, because every team member that we hire is providing value, in my opinion, to the public that we all are serving here, and I think they do so at a good value. I think this is a great budget. I think it's a great product of many months of well-thought-out work that is in response to direction that was given many, many months ago by the council. And I just appreciate the stewardship, the feeling of stewardship that I recognize in our team members for how they've put this together for us.
Thank you. I think I'll save my comments for after the vote, because it feels like we're ready. We did our preliminary budget, had some discussion.
Mayor, members of the council, close the public hearing.
Here's a question. On the agenda, it said item 48 was a public hearing. Was this considered public hearing too? Okay. Then I better open the public hearing on 49, which I never did. And I will close the public hearing on 49 and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 49.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion, second please vote. Thank you. Now, just a quick comment or two, and then we'll wrap things up. So Dawn, Councilmember Daniels just said it. The start of next year's budget begins.
Sir.
And to Councilmember Peterson's comment, I thought I copyrighted that phrase, Team Gilbert, but I guess I didn't, so other people can use it. It has been a good team effort, and I appreciate many efforts, and even Councilmember Taylor's comments. Dawn, you've kind of led the way, and I've watched it closely over the year. You've had a lot of ideas and thoughts of how to do cost containment, reduce expenses. You've asked a lot of tough questions of our 1,200 Team Gilbert members, and so thank you for that. Please continue. And these ideas, even as Councilmember Taylor said, we want to keep those ideas in front of us, talking about them. As I said in the last meeting, a preliminary budget, and our final budget is the cap, and there are many items in this budget that will continue to have some good detailed discussion in the next 12 months as a council and as citizens. We appreciate that. What I do like, and since our preliminary budget discussion, I did go back and looked at the benchmark report that had come earlier in the year, and just like the budget and this particular report, the emphasis that we took on our mission of being a service organization, of our vision of the best-in-class, which is very much focused here. We do know that many municipalities, not just in greater Phoenix, but in the state, but outside of Arizona, are now looking to Gilbert as a model. We have not perfected every best-in-class, and even if we're best-in-class, we don't want to lose that competitive drive to keep going. But there are a lot of positive things that we want to recognize and thank, not just our Team Gilbert and the council, but the citizens that are helping and giving ideas and, and pushing us too. The budget, to me, is a very good combination of focusing on our service levels, which was just mentioned, and also the best use of taxpayer dollars. And that dialogue needs to continue. I especially appreciate, because Gilbert residents do have an emphasis on public safety, and they've asked all seven of us to continue to keep that focus, and this upcoming 12-month budget has a great emphasis on police and fire support, and that's, I think, the exact way it should be. So with that, no tax increases, just taking that desire to continue to maintain service and exceed our benchmarks that we've done. Thank you for the efforts. We will carry on, and I'm ready to move on to administrative items.
And you need a motion to, yes?
I'm not ready to move on to administrative items until, is there a motion to adjourn the special meeting and reconvene in regular meeting? So moved.
Second.
Thank you. In the administrative items, Agenda Item 50, boards, commissions, and committees, any comments? Councilmember Daniels?
Mayor Lewis, our Operation Welcome Home event that was scheduled for June 26 is actually not going to occur this month, so I haven't actually sent that email to Kathy yet, but we can, special announcement to the citizens, there will be no Operation Welcome Home event on the 26th. However, we do anticipate one in September, so keep your calendars open. Also, Mayor, our Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee, we are going to begin recruitment for next year's class, so if you have a high school student, ninth through 12th grade, and they are interested in joining our Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee, they can find an application on the website beginning July, no, beginning, I think, next week. So keep those, keep looking for that, that application to come soon. Thank you.
And Kurt, thank you for all your help. I have an assignment to update the letter from the mayor for our Mayor's Youth Advisory Council potential members for next year. Team Gilbert. Okay, thank you. Any other comments on Agenda Item 50? Agenda Item 50, two future meetings, any discussion? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, I'd like to discuss, I'm happy to fill a card out if we need to formalize this. As, item 36 tonight was a reinstatement from someone that had, there was, there was someone that missed three meetings on a commission, and so we have an ordinance that says if they missed three meetings, they're automatically released from that position. I'd like to discuss potential exemptions to that. As a future meeting, I'm happy to, you know, fill a card out unless there's a nod, you know, enough, if that's good enough, but if you want more information, I can expand a little bit more on that. I know we don't discuss the mayor's.
We, town leadership has the nod, and we'll place it on a future agenda. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else on future meetings? Agenda Item 53, report from deputy manager on current events.
None, Mayor, thank you.
54, report from members of the council on current events. Agenda Item 55, report from the mayor. Two items. I appreciated the opportunity to represent Gilbert at the Maricopa Association of Government press conference, where it was announced that the EPA had approved MAGS 5% plan for PM10 admissions. And that was another, speaking of Team Gilbert, that was a team-region effort, and a lot of individuals participated in helping us get that approval. And then a final note, congratulations to our chief digital officer, Dana Birchman, featured in a new national handbook titled Writing the Digital Business Handbook. We look forward to reading that. Vice Mayor Cook, please.
Well, you should talk about it, but we were fortunate, Councilmember Daniels, myself, and the mayor, to meet with our counterparts with the Salt River Communities Council. And that was a wonderful joint meeting that we had with them, and we're very thrilled that we have a great partnership and relationship with, with that group. So it was a wonderful time.
Thank you.
And they gave you kind of a wonderful.
A gift that is on display here at Town Hall.
Yeah, thank you.
And I don't know, you know, the way we seem to reciprocate in Gilbert is with Joe's barbecue sauce, but they love it. Okay, thank you. On that note, thank you again for all your efforts. Meeting adjourned.